All right, so we're gonna go ahead and open up tonight's meeting. It is Monday, August 1st. We're here at the John Hedwijn Meeting Room at this 79th School Street, Moretown Select Board. And so we'll open tonight with public comments. And Chris, is that you or Deb?
Yes, I'm here for public comment.
All right, so let's go ahead and start on the left with Chris.
So Chris Stevenson, yeah, on 20th Farm Road. I'm on our Rec Committee Chair, just for those who don't know me. And we made a motion recently at our meeting, and I wanted to make sure there's your support to, in conjunction with the Morefest Committee and the school, to remove five chunks of fence in front of the pavilion to allow for better traffic flow. You know, for Morefest reasons, where we can put the band in there and we can fit across. And further to fix the fence, we had either an accident...
Let me give this guy... all right.
We have either an accident or vandalism on the gate next to the sign here. To me, it looks like it caught on some motorcycle wheel, or who knows. It just looks like it would hurt a person to do that much damage. But the gate needs to be removed altogether or repaired. And then there's a few clips that have undone themselves, that's pretty minor. And further to remove the two springheads that randomly stick out from the field that we've yet to find anyone and wants to defend their existence. One is between the baseball diamond back cage and pavilion. And then the other one is right in front of the pavilion at the end of the fence, which...
What'd you call it?
Like, it's a springheaded pump? I think it's a, well, I guess I learned half the story. I mean, it appeared to me to be fed from a spring up high, and that was some sort of pump with water going. But I had heard from Greg Wagner that it was actually tied into the school. But it wasn't working, and it wouldn't be allowable anyway because of their ultraviolet filtering system, which are things I know that much about. So the idea would be to get rid of those two springheads, which I think we need the town support on, and then connect with the fence company to fix the gate. In our budget, in our non-existent budget that we're working with you guys on, we had earmarked $400 for this. And as I understand it, the school would split the cost, so that's another $400, so that in theory would be $800. I'm not sure with the gate damage if that's totally enough, but I certainly want to make sure that you're general support and then work on the end quote.
Ray, what do you think?
Yeah, it'd be really good to know for sure before you take those out that they don't belong to Eugene or somebody else.
Yeah, I mean, Greg is pretty confident in their history and their recent history. I could try and get that in writing.
Yeah, I would definitely check with Eugene.
Eugene right here.
Eugene Graham Field, right here in the schoolhouse.
Yeah.
Make sure that he doesn't have... those aren't his, because that would be... we'd be putting them back up.
Okay, I can, personally, I can go there, that's fine.
And the fence that you're talking, taking out, and that's something that will be out permanently, is that correct?
Yes, so, right, as you kind of go down the road, the pavilion's on the left, the fence randomly kind of ends, defining the lower field essentially. So we would take five sections of it back, maybe they're 10-foot sections, I didn't measure them.
It brings you back just about to the gate.
Yeah, it gives you a section or two, yeah, it's halfway to the gate, I'd say. There's still a little bit. And actually, it was also pointed out by Stefan that it would probably help with getting a climbing wall out there for Morefest, because it's been a hassle for them to figure out how to get through some of the ditching, and it might even help with the man-back site.
So does it make sense then to come to the gate itself, rather than just have that piece jutting out? I mean, what does that use for again?
I think, there's a couple of things on that. Mandy was wanting to uphold the quality of the baseball diamond, and kids use the backstop, so she was talking more about that. But nobody knows why we got a bad rap for the ball field. And recently, I heard we did invest and did a nice investment in the diamond material, and it's grown in probably progress. So I reached out to Couples Field, actually, to talk to them about demand for install fields, and, you know, explore what they might know, or maybe even make partner, or maybe they want to fix it up for us because they have overflow, I have no idea.
I have no idea.
Once, once the red fields were bought up...
On Airport Route?
Yeah, Airport Route. I think that they didn't really need this anymore, at least that's how I understand it.
Yeah, so I think there's been discussion about sunsetting the baseball altogether or fixing it up. I mean, my guess is as good as anyone else who doesn't have any facts. It'd be great to see if we could find people using a baseball diamond, because it's half...
It's not, yeah, it's fields, it would be...
So to circle back to your question, the more fence we remove, the more balls would roll into the river and fall in your garden.
All right, so I think the original suggestion is probably...
Start with the five of us. We can always remove more if we discuss.
Yeah, because folks do play soccer, actually, so we're sure of the facts.
Yeah, they do, yeah, true.
Is that all you have for us, Chris?
Yeah, I mean, just a bunch of cases if you want to, but that's the really important one.
I mean, this gate lock, is it, I mean, is it something that we're locking or we're not?
During, certainly during school time, or school hours, it's supposed to be locked. Because the idea is they don't want traffic, it makes sense, because all the kids going back and forth. As a town, we've always wanted it locked in the evening, because we'd have problems with vandalism or, you know, partying without picking up extra selves in it. Does it always get locked? Probably not. Until Steph wonders someone consciously does it, and it's what we do for a few days here and there. The key is accessible to everyone, because it is for emergency, in case someone has to call them up on the trails or on the tennis courts. We've left that key, so I mean, it's widely known, it's keeping, the lock is keeping all those people out, basically.
Or just the threat of it being locked?
Yeah.
I haven't seen it locked in a long time, since we changed the lock, then it got unlocked and turned on lock. And another point was made to me, that this lot fills up with traffic, and we're starting to get more use here, so it's, there's a benefit, I think, to having our rec traffic out of the school log.
Yeah, I think we're gonna tie that. We had the request for it in the spring, and the information that I got was more to do, again, with the kids during the school year. So certainly during the summer, I don't...
Yeah, there was a sign in the, I don't know how much time, in the gazebo, in the, what do you call it, the entrance signage there that said that the playground, or that everything was closed from 7:30 to 2:30. So we took that down, because that's not true.
Right, so, all right, so...
Yeah, I'm gonna talk to Mandy about anything. I remember, part of the town forest plan that we're doing is working with the school to identify their classrooms, and use that to put hunting boundary, classroom boundaries, so they don't keep moving classrooms on and off the trail. And then we should talk about, we'll talk about traffic corridor relocation of another bathroom that Mandy's interested in, and honestly, the kids should probably go to the playground through a different route, another route, should be considered as well.
That's all good stuff.
Yeah.
Thanks, Chris, I know you guys are working on a lot of good things. Appreciate it, the gardens look good, looking for, I hope some more color comes up with them as well. Looking, a lot of white out there, I was looking for some color.
Oh, the wildflowers?
Yes.
Yes, you're not dealing, so that's just buckwheat, and it's sort of just a cover crop to keep it from drying out. If you look closely, especially if you go around the back, you'll see some wildflowers are in there.
Nice, good.
I think it's a roll of the dice to see, and some are planted in their roots, and those are like leafband, and those are already seeding. So we'll roll the dice to see how awesome it looks, we can always do it again in a year or two. The soil's low here, and the one up there actually looks a lot better.
I think it's nice, it's nice to have a lot of bees around, the one I saw the other day. Pretty good, so Deb, what you got for us tonight?
So I'm back about the rented property on 100B that I'm concerned about. Last time I was in, our health officer had written a letter to the property owner saying that some action needed to be done. I spoke briefly to him, and my understanding is that no action, there's been very little movement on fixing any part of the property, and that the renters are now, or at least some of them, are putting their rent in escrow. So I guess I'm just here to bring this issue up against, up against the town in terms of what, if anything, we can do to support renters. The health officer had spoken to me at one point about the, having a court order that gives deadlines for work needing to be done at certain times, which would be preferable to condemning the building, in which case everybody would have to move, and nobody wants that. So I am here, I guess, to express my concern, as I did a few weeks ago, to us having this property and allowing this really health violations to continue in our town, and people to essentially be living in a slum, uninhabitable situation. And this letter was written from the health officer on July 1st, and the property owner had 15 days to business days to respond, so it's gone past that point, and...
When did you speak with Dick? When did you speak with Dick last?
Today.
Today, okay. Because you gotta send it over to Ron to order, do you have health order?
But, you know... Oh, you didn't tell me that. But that's okay. Then I guess my question is, does the select board support that in going to, with what Ron comes up with in terms of how to move forward, to bring this property up to responsible living conditions?
Well, it's been with the select board's support that it's gotten to our, the town attorney at this point. So when we get back some information from the attorney, I'm sure that the board, I guess I shouldn't say "I'm sure," but it's likely the board will go along with their recommendations to move forward. And, you know, we're pursuing this for a reason, because of the way it is, so it's not to sit and tend and wonder what to do, it's really, all right, we want to take action on this. You know, Dick's trying to do his job by the book, and as we all are. And so, you know, sometimes, you know, and sometimes Dick can't tell you things that that are going on as well. But you can rest assured, as long as I'm here, that we are working on it, and it's not something that's being kicked around in the circle either. I mean, it's going to be appropriate people at, you know, the times that it allows.
Thank you, thanks for your time and all of that. I just want to be sure that this does continue.
Sure, no, I understand, I think, thank you for advocate. That's nice.
All right.
Very good.
I'll see you later.
All right, Deb, thank you very much.
I'll be back in a minute.
All right, so now we, is there any other public comment? Kristen Rogers?
Hi, so I just, I know Lisa was in, I'm coming as a person from the school board, and I know Lisa stopped in on July 5th to talk about our meet and greets with our new superintendent, Dr. Mike. And so I wanted to just, you know, keep promoting them, so we do have a meet and greet coming up on Wednesday, August 17th, at the Warren Town Hall from 5:00 to 7:30. And that address is 413 Main Street in Warren. And then we have another meet and greet on Saturday, September 10th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Waste Field Farmers Market. So I just want to, you know, continue to keep the word out there, so people can feel free to stop by and see him. And for those who are not going to be able to attend these in person, we are going to be hosting a Zoom kind of Q and A with him at some point in the fall.
Kristen, I believe he has also decided that he's going to join us at Morefest for the cake eating contest. He thinks it's a judging contest, but it's actually an eating contest.
Yeah, and he's the, he's definitely, you know, if there's more events that, you know, Moretown's going to be holding, anything like that, he definitely wants to be part of all of our town's community. So he's, you know, if there's anything else that's special that's coming up, definitely feel free to, you know, let him know, because he definitely would be interested in seeing what's out there. He really wants to get to know all of our towns.
Well, that's encouraging, thank you, and thank you for letting us know about the upcoming meetings.
Yeah, thank you so much, guys, have a great meeting.
Thank you. All right, do we have anyone else online that was here for public comments? Mike Brigano, do you have a public comment this evening?
No, no, not for me.
All right, thank you. All right, so anyone else here have public comments? We're all good? All right, so we are going to move on to the upper right-hand square with Clark Amadon. He is here for the village wastewater discussion. Clark, the...
Hey, folks. Sorry it's taken us so long to get back to you here, just to give you a, kind of where we're at at this point, that there has been a small committee of Moretown residents that have been taking some time to take a look at proposals from Dewboys and King and Otter Creek Engineering to do a feasibility study for a village wastewater. And the RFQs went out during the winter, the proposals came in early spring, and finally the, we formed the committee, and it's met a couple of times in late May and June to formulate our approach. In late June, we had interviews with both Otter Creek and Dewboys and King, and due to vacations and people being out of town, we weren't able to actually sit down and review the interviews that we had with the firms and make our recommendation for feasibility study. So that's where we're at, and I just want to double check, I'm, I'm here to pass along the committee's recommendation for which one of the firms to do the feasibility study. And Tom, I checked with you, and this is not something that is going to be an executive session, this will be an open meeting, is that correct?
That is correct, yeah.
Okay, great, okay, so just to cut to the base, both firms were outstanding in their presentations and also in the interviews, and the committee felt lucky that, you know, these are firms that are active and working and doing great projects in Vermont. Both firms have done feasibility studies or engineering studies for similar projects, but after taking a look at both of the firms' proposals and the interaction that we had with the firms, the committee would like to recommend to the select board that they, that we choose the Otter Creek Engineering folks to do the engineering study.
Very good, Ray?
Yeah, have Dave been on that, with Clark, or...
No, no, they haven't, Ray, because I didn't feel like it was our position to do that. I let him know that we needed to meet with the select board to make the recommendation, and if the select board chooses to go along with that, then I'm not quite sure who would reach out to them. I'm happy to do that on behalf of the select board if you want, or if you, if it's appropriate to have someone on the board connect with them, that would be fine.
Yeah, either way...
Yeah, we can, that's something that probably we'll have in the hand of Clark, if you don't mind, you've been working with these firms.
Yeah, so you'd like me to do it?
Yeah. Before you do that, the questions I had, so this was all falling under the grant that we have for this feasibility study, is that correct?
Well, you know, you know, it's fairly convoluted, frankly. What happens is that now that a firm has been selected, I'll be contacting Tom Brown and one other person that has come on with the projects, and what they're going to do is, they actually will be negotiating with the firms in terms of the scope of the work and the fee. And the town will be involved with that process, and there may be an, this may be actually an opportunity, Ray, for you to, and answer some of the questions that come up, or maybe me, I'm not quite sure. So the next communication that I have with the board will probably be, it could be as early as a couple of weeks at the next meeting, so that I can update you on a little bit more of the nuances about where this goes from here. The town is going to be responsible for filling out an application, of which I volunteered to do, but a lot of the work is going to be done between the firms and the state point, because it's the state's dime or dimes that are going to be paying for this. So that's, and I wish I could be a little more specific, but it's a, it's a relatively long process, and, let's see, it's the 1st of August. The sense is that probably, you know, we're going to try to get, shoot, to get this done around the 1st of November, end of November, or something like that. There are different completion dates that, and horizons that the state has set up. And like I said, the next time I meet, I'll be able to give you more specifics in terms of when that will be done.
Good, well, I think you answered my question by the state's dime, so I did like that answer, thanks.
And Clark, are you anticipating, or should we anticipate using any Recovery Act funds for this at this time?
You mean, what has been, you mean the ARPA funds for the town?
Yes.
No, no, not at, not at this point, Ray, we, you know, the cost for this is probably going to be somewhere between $90 and $110,000 or something like that, that's kind of the ballpark that, you know, we've kind of kicked around. And, yeah, so no, we're not going to be asking for any ARPA funds.
Okay, just to be clear, Clark, I didn't want to get involved with selection process, and I told you that, but I'm glad they, now that we've made that selection, or want to make that selection, I'm willing to step in and help you any way I can.
Yeah, I think we're, when I, when I, I'm going to contact the state, probably not tomorrow, on Wednesday, kind of make sure that I understand what the timeline is, and then, you know, it'll probably be important to, and then that's when, you know, that we, you know, you and I, and maybe the committee can start working on this. And, and I know I'm jumping around, the committee, there's a couple that I'm impressed staying involved with this, Jay Pugliad specifically, so it'll be great to have Jay around as well, so...
John, or, I don't know, it's round two, Callie, Don, any questions for Clark?
No, no question, I was just making sure that Moretown didn't have to spend any money, sounds like we don't.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, eventually we may have to spend some money, but, you know, the point is to get, paid for out of other funds, the state revolving fund, so that's, that's hopefully where this is going.
Okay.
Actually, Clark, I do have one question. Clark, what's your sense, just as you've been working on this and with some of the engineers and such, what's your sense to the, the feedback you're getting? Is it actually, is something, is possible, is, it can be a location in the village to have a treatment and all, the plan and all that?
Yeah, that's my question, is like going for treatment.
Yeah, that's a really good question, Callie and Donnie. So there have been a couple of comments that engineers have sort of made off the cuff as they've looked at the topography of Moretown Village, and, you know, one person, oh, I, where you put it, kind of question. So, yeah, but, I mean, that's what the feasibility study is supposed to answer, you know, is whether or not we're actually going to have an opportunity to...
I think that's me.
Someone backing over you, Clark.
Oh, okay, ready to back it up?
We don't know, I mean, I, and this is, I don't think this is irresponsible speculation, but it is something that's come up. So one of the things that we've learned is that the system that's up on the hill that serves the school, in order to put a system in like that, you have to have backup site in case that place, in case that fails. So there, there may be actually more capacity up there than, than we think. So, anyway.
Anyway, okay.
And also have to make a maintenance deal. Because your road department cannot maintain your sewer system, so... Absolutely, all right. You have to...
Yeah, you'll have to hire, you know, maintenance people to do that, that's part of, I mean, you know, as we go down the road on this, if we get that far down that we're actually answering those questions, you know, we'll have made a fairly serious commitment to, you know, press on.
All right, so I've moved to accept the committee's recommendation for Otter Creek Engineering for the feasibility study.
No, sorry.
Any further discussion or questions on that, the motion? All in favor, vote aye. Aye. Against?
I abstain.
And Ray abstaining, so, thank you, everyone. So Clark, you can go ahead, reach out to Otter Creek, but more so the state, and let them know what's direction you're going, where we are going.
Yeah, and let me just double check something here, because, yeah, if you'd like me to come in on the 15th, I can do that, so just let me know.
Okay. Thank you, Clark.
Okay, all right, thanks, everybody.
Okay, thanks, Clark.
You're welcome.
And the noise, what does it do?
He goes away and the noise goes away, imagine that. All right, well, thank you, Clark, for your, your time. All right, so we are moving right ahead, we are two minutes behind. Mark for the Waterbury Ambulants.
Hi, guys, hey, Mark Parker, director of Waterbury Ambulance, this is Maggie Burke, she's the administrator, administrator, that's right. We just thought we'd stop in, give you a little update on where we are, especially where we are with our building project, and I'm sure you've heard about by now, but if not, you're going to know about it by the time you leave. So as you guys know, we celebrated 50 years this past year, covering Moretown, just about the section that we've covered, just about all that time. We moved into our, four of our quarters in 19, early 1980, I think it was 1983, and the quarters were great for that, in that time period, et cetera, but we have overwhelmed them. B.C., or before COVID, we would do bug, stop and bleed trainings, public CPR trainings, things of that nature, as well as our own trainings in that particular location. But now the ambulance has gotten, gotten bigger, the ambulance that we're going to take delivery of next year is eight inches too long to fit into the bay. So, and we've known for a long while that these quarters were substandard, so it was time to start looking, and it took us almost five years to find the location. We finally have, it's down on 100, Waterbury Still Road, right where Bourne's, tanks used to be, on the left-hand side, going north, just past Gupso Road, it's on the left-hand side. So that's where we're going, we hope, but the permits are all, permit applications are all in, and we're just waiting for approval. Copley is also going in there and putting in Mansfield Orthopedic Building, and that's an implication. So as soon as the permits are done, the land will change hands, and we will commence building at this point in time. Looks like we're going to be at least putting in the road before the end of the year, and with a lot of luck, construction right after the 1st of the year can begin, if all goes well. So we have, let Maggie give you this, the rundown of what we're planning, what it looks like, the school.
Yeah, so the scoop on the building is we are fundraising $3 million towards the project. When we initially started, it was 2.5, but as you know, inflation issues that we've been having with supply chain, we had to bump that up to 3 million. I've got some brochures that I'll share about the project. We've been fundraising, not only from individuals, but grants, corporations. We're going to be putting an event on in the fall and basically doing everything we can in order to raise these $3 million. In terms of our capacity with this project, Mark and I are full-time with Waterbury Ambulance. We have eight per DM employees, and the remainder of our squad is all volunteer. What's happened nationwide with volunteers is that volunteerism and EMS has decreased. That's because of the amount of strict time and energy that it takes to get the certifications and keep them up, as well as just kind of the way the world has gone, that people have less time to volunteer. That being said, we still do have 35 volunteers who are volunteering, you know, 24 hours a day, seven days a week to respond. In terms of our service area, 76% of who we serve is Waterbury, 4% is Moretown, and 20% is F30. So Moretown is a small portion of what we cover. We cover as far as including Lover's Lane from Waterbury over. Mark mentioned those space restrictions, so one of the things that we've had to consider is having overnight accommodations as volunteerism has gone down. We've had to bring in folks from other towns to come stay, and our current facility doesn't have adequate showers or sleeping quarters for staff members to be there. So where we stand with our fundraising is, we had available $1.5 million. That was from saving over the last bit, knowing that this project is coming up. We've also been significant in COVID response. So we've been testing and vaccinating. We started with just a couple of testing sites, and we got asked by the state to start doing homebound vaccinations. And now, last month, we did 90 different vaccination clinics throughout the state. So we're not just serving this area, we're going all over, at least central Vermont. We go into Burlington a little bit. We were more fest vaccinated, we've come here to vaccinate, and then our test site in both Berlin and Waterbury has been us. So that wasn't just Mark and I and our small team of 40 or so. We hired on over 200 employees, nursing students, EMTs from other areas. Mark has a long history in EMS here in Vermont, so we were able to kind of gather our friends together to really make that happen, and we were able to gain income. Something important, too, is we're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, so we aren't part of the municipality of Waterbury. We're our own separate entity, which is good and bad in different ways. We're grateful that we have the opportunity to have some independence, so. So that 1.5 we had available, from that, we've raised an additional $730,000. That leaves us, so we've raised a total of 2.23 million, and we have 770,000 left to go. So we still have a waste. We had one donor come in and give $500,000 in order to name the facility after Karen Steele, whose husband Ed Steele helped start Pilgrim Park, which was a huge part of the Waterbury community. Really, when we're looking at donors, most of the people that are giving are from within our service area, because it doesn't make a whole lot of sense for folks from the out part, from not within who we're serving to give. We went and met with the Waterbury Select Board in the beginning of July, or middle of July, and spoke with them, and a few different community member suggestions to request ARPA funds. And what they said was, they gave approval to give $76,000 towards the project. And there were two contingencies. One contingency was voter approval, and the other contingency that was the percentages that I mentioned earlier, 76% of Waterbury is who we serve, 20% Duxbury, and 4% Moretown. They were interested in those towns matching at their level that we serve towards that contribution to make a total of $100,000. And I hope that I was clear. So 76,000 would come from Waterbury, 4,000 from Moretown, and 20,000 from Duxbury. So we're here to request that $4,000 appropriation of ARPA funds towards our project. Anything to add, Mark?
You covered it. I took my steam tube, so.
Sorry. Any questions?
With the building being way on the other side of town, if you will, moving outward, as far as your response times down this way, you see those?
Response time, actually, that would be better, because we're not coming down, up to a well road for 1.7 miles. We're just going to be right up the road, right onto 100, right there.
Anybody? John, I mean, Ray, Callie?
Is this something we can just put in our budget, two over one next year or something? Or is, as you say, it's needed now, or these towns are putting it in there for next year?
What would work?
Like we normally do, right?
Yeah, what would work is just a commitment at this point in time. Cash is not needed now. It's just, I hate to use the word pacify, but satisfy. Waterbury, they have the two contingencies. If there's a commitment on the part of Moretown, then that's fine. That's great. That's most appreciated.
Well, it's certainly a tight budget time to put for you and us as well, but it's a service that we all use and need. We appreciate what you do, we appreciate you, you know, showing up at Morefest, you know, and knowing where people are vaccinating from town.
It was cute, actually, the first day of the puppet for boosters for the older class. And it was adorable, people running and grabbing their friends and.
Yeah, when you told me, I was like, really?
So we're running our pretty, it was very fun, but.
So I can certainly support a $4,000 donation to the Waterbury Ambulance EMS. I'm not sure we will take that out of ARPA funds, but as long as we can give you a commitment and figure that out, you know, by the end of the year, you know, depending on how our budget is, either this year or the first of the year, no later than the end of January.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you guys have voted on first. That was a motion.
Okay, so I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Well, would it also be something that, I mean, you know how every year in our town budget that we present, we have line items for ambulance and stuff?
Exactly, that's why I said we.
Yeah.
But, so all in favor, vote aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Unless you're with me, I have more time to do, I would rather have a break.
Well, thank you for your work on the end of the. John?
Did you buy, or you got?
Margie's bought that horse house.
Oh, I know, I got it.
We go, we go feed it. Yeah, yeah, yeah. We got it.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thanks. All right, so let's move ahead. We have the paving bids on the River Road project coming up, and we have now done ahead of our schedule, like two minutes. So Ray, what do you have with the bids here?
Okay, looks like we have one, two, three, four, five bids.
Is there anyone else, because there was rumor that someone was coming with bids for the paving? All right, see in here, none. Ray?
The first bid, I'm just going to read the pricing at this point.
Yeah.
And we can review, Mark, I can review. We have a bid here for Pike Industries, a total amount of $160,881.46.
Say that one more time, Ray. All right.
We have a bid from ST Paving, $170,350. Fresh Coat Asphalt Services, $170,780. Frank Whitman, Whitcomb Construction, $162,465. And the last bid is from Jay Hutchins, $187,278.75. So the apparent no bidder at this time is Pike Industries, and the second bidder would be Whitcomb. So I would suggest at this point, let Mark and I review these along with Cheryl to see what we have for funds, and.
And then come back with us with a recommendation on those.
Yeah.
Can you reach out somewhere between you and Martin or Cheryl to let these guys know where we're at with that?
I will. Yeah, grateful, especially if we want to do it this year.
Yeah.
So, okay.
All right, so we have to go there, and then once you get a finalized recommendation, come back and we'll make a motion to go ahead with that.
Can I ask a quick question? I don't know, this, this, you know, things come a lot, so.
Yeah.
So that, how, was that paved originally because of the farm, was one of them going, operating the farm?
That was the main reason. We were having a heck of a time.
Yeah, with the rolling mud and the farm vehicles and all that.
Yeah.
I mean, but now that that's not being farmed anymore, is it, does it, what they do with the S machine, yeah, okay, you're right. I'm just curious, you know?
Part of it was base, wasn't there a problem with the base material as well?
Yeah, yeah, it was a very wet area.
Oh, I mean, it doesn't make sense, I'm just curious, does it make sense to put it back to a dirt road? No. I don't know, probably not.
I guess I have to be a sweat.
I mean, there's a cost of that, too, to grind it all up and take it up, so I don't know.
Yeah.
They are still, you know, cutting and hanging and storing equipment.
There's still, there's still a chopping corner. I want to say there was cypress somewhere that one of the grandkids maybe was going to take it over and do something with it, and it may come back and may not.
I just wondered the history of that.
You know, when we were initially talking about this, and I think it was just last fall, Martin, because that was my initial thought, it was, you know, it's as bad as it is, and I can't exactly recall the conversation, but I know after Martin went through what was beyond, why that was there, I maybe agreed with, all right, let's go ahead and look into paving it. I'm sorry, I can't recall what everyone it was, but otherwise, I don't think we, that was.
I don't think we've done this far, but I just, I was just wondering, you know?
Sure, that's a good question.
Yeah.
That was a quick question, too. So, all right. All right, so let's, there's nothing else with that on my agenda, and get to the neck of the woods. Excuse me.
I feel like we should get Raisin Hill.
We do, there are Raisins.
It's great that you're in, we're excited. So somebody, do people get what I sent over to Sasha?
Yes.
Hey, do you mind, just so everyone knows who you are, just?
That would be a great idea.
Introductions, yes.
I'm Betsy John Groh, I'm a member of the board of Neck of the Woods. And I'm Moee Morrison, I'm the executive director of Neck of the Woods, which used to be the Moretown Education Center for.
Yeah, I think.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your name.
Moee, it's actually Morgan, but everyone calls me Moee, M-O-I-E.
Moretown girl.
Moretown girl, Donna used to be my coach, that's why I'm such a good soccer player. Really not, but. I like to pronounce. So we're here tonight because as you've read through our recap, we are working aggressively to build out a childcare center at the old Small Dog Building, which will ultimately house 125 kids from six weeks old to pre-kindergarten. So it's a very ambitious project. We have already, in our fundraising and through the community, raised over $900,000, which allowed us to purchase the building, put a down payment on it. There are a lot of state requirements in terms of what we have to do in order to be a childcare center, including a public walk system, which was $150,000. A new wastewater system, which is going to go in this fall, and lots of other licenses. There we go. Round of chat, John. We did, I know.
You're on a tight ship here, I'm sorry.
That's impressive, I think you've got a new, new audience to be, so.
My name is John Donaldson, I'm on the board at Neck of the Woods.
And our treasurer. So what we have been able to do so far is build out the ground floor, and once we get the wastewater system, as we said in the presentation, we will be up to 75 kids. The next major hurdle is why we're here tonight, which is to install a commercial kitchen in the building, which will bring the first Head Start program to the Valley, which will allow us to become a Head Start program, which brings lots of additional services, as well as more advantages for lower-income families. To give you a little bit of information, we currently, as I said, have 51 kids in the building. We also run the summer camp program out of the Moretown School, and Moee also runs the after-school program at the Moretown School. That's all under our umbrella. And we have a waiting list right now of close to 90 kids, even with all those programs going on. So the need is endless. And to be able to bring Head Start into the Valley is, we think, as a lot of people in Valley have, a huge advantage. And as we all know, childcare is like a hot topic. So we're hoping to get from each of the Valley towns, a sum of $25,000 each from ARPA funds if possible, so that we can begin that kitchen process, and we will raise the rest on head of fundraising. So I will use that more or less as a match to bring in the rest of the funds and be able to build that kitchen, hopefully, in 2023.
Did you mention how many Moretown kids?
No, but right now, it's 24% of our enrollment is from Moretown. And the next biggest town is Waitsfield, and then Facebook. Warren is the smallest because of the farthest away, but with over 200 kids in our programs right now, Moretown is definitely the number one.
So that's supporting a wide spectrum of folks in town, and how are your costs? I guess everyone's getting an opportunity.
Yeah, so it's pretty well, it's first come, first served, but 30% of our population is free and used, not that that matters right now, because everyone gets free lunch, but through the HUSD. But 30% of our population is technically lower income, and we can raise that even higher for folks. It's really hard for families who are lower income to be able to afford childcare, you know, the lower end of the spectrum, which we are. So this would be a huge opportunity for us to be able to offer that to them.
Yeah, because I see that as a huge obstacle for folks around the, is the childcare and the municipal cost, I don't know how to do it, you know?
There are a lot of subsidy programs that they can apply to, which Moee connects them to. The Beverly Valley Community Fund offers subsidies. Yeah, the American Council, and, I mean, subsidy through the state as well, which is shifting and changing. So the more we can help as a whole unit, the better off everyone will be. This will be a huge opportunity though, because it also, Head Start also offers the opportunity for them to, for Capstone to offer us some staff to pass along to families that basically can do like home check-ins and offer services outside of our programming and inside of our programming. So it's on a real purpose, and it's incredibly helpful.
And so standing in the way is a lack of a kitchen, just?
Surprisingly, yes. Yeah, you have to have a food service. Well, there's lots of empty within it. Yeah. And it has to be commercial, and it's a very expensive process, because we have to germinate the space that we would put it in, connecting to septic, movement of stuff. So it's a very high-ticket item, I think it's $190,000 total, for the whole build out, all the appliances. But it'll offer us the opportunity, also, our long-term plans for Neck of the Woods is to open it up to the community when we're not using it. So it gives us great meeting spaces down the road. We also happen to own, this is just not specific to the kitchen, but part of the building, the Small Dog Building itself is 10,000 square feet, which is massive. You don't really realize it until you get in there. We also own almost a 5,000-square-foot warehouse that's behind it, that's currently rented out, but it could be a great community space down the road, which we don't really have. And it offers the opportunity, basketball courts, climbing walls, because it's big and open. So it's really an exciting. So it's really an exciting opportunity for the whole Valley as we look forward, what we can do with this building. And we'd also like, if you have any interest in coming and taking a tour, we're always available. Not always, depends on the kids.
Yeah, mostly, sometimes we're sleeping. We're not sleeping, the kids are sleeping, we should come in our way.
The other piece of this that's, that's becoming more and more important is, other childcare programs in the Valley have had to shrink their offerings for staffing reasons, and I think that Children, that Waitsfield Children's Center has suspended their infant program for the next six months, so obviously the funds remain on our end, because we'll know there are a few places that takes in kids.
And we can't take them, that's the call, much like everyone else.
Yeah, but the bigger we get, the better.
To Tom's question though, are you finding that, you know, because Moretown is so spread out, I mean, are people coming from the Waterbury side of Moretown?
Everywhere, yeah. Yeah, we actually, we have people on the very, very far side, we have actually a couple people from our fields, and then circling in down there, and then we have folks all the way from the Waterbury side, and then on this side, we have a couple Middlesex folks, and circling in on there, all the way back that way, pretty much everywhere. Even have, I mean, we even will find families that work over this direction, work in the Valley, but they live in Burlington. So it's, it's great, because it brings people in to work in the Valley, and we want people in the workforce, and we want people in the Valley, and so it's a great, it's a great resource for those folks as well, so.
Just for me, it's, it's actually kind of amazing, because remembering you coming in eight, seven, eight years ago, whatever it was, guys, with 1,500 bucks, to do something at the school, and you're with a few kids, you know?
This has got a more expensive taste, huh?
Yeah. No, 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 I'm pleased, I'm pleased to hear that we're still retaining space for Moretown folks, there's 23% or 40%, what you said.
We have a really, we, we love the other towns, but we're gonna keep it secret over here, Moretown is our, like, love.
You're on camera.
Turn, just edit that.
I've tried that before, they won't do it.
Yeah, we do, we have a really nice camaraderie with Moretown, so.
Questions around the table, folks? John Kelly? So we have, obviously, a process here, I can support this, being this much money, we will have to put it in front of the voters. I don't know if we're seeing anything like this not pass, but frankly, and we can probably use our ARPA funds for it, I mean, that's a little board decision, as we get down closer to that, how we will do the wording for it. As long as the, you know, the rest of the board supports it, it seems that there's a lot of head nodding and agreeing, you know, we can give you a verbal, we'll do this as long as the voters.
Can you get it on the November ballot? Or you have to wait to, next spring?
I can get back to you on that. We can probably get it on the November ballot, I did want to speak with the planning commission too, and see what they have for, we've asked them to form a committee for the ARPA funds and see what they have, so want to kind of align with what they're doing. But it's not out of the question to do it then. But I think, and we'll take a vote here in a moment, but I think you've got a commitment that we'll get it in front of the voters and support it in front of the voters, so the likelihood of it passing is probably pretty good.
That'd be great.
Especially if we got 21% of the people going, and, you know, sell it to your people to vote for it, and, God, I don't think, again, these type of things go over pretty well here in town, because they see the value of the.
Yeah, the world's, you know, the need for childcare is on everybody's mind, I think. I don't think it's something that anybody doesn't understand.
No, I think you might as well have a job, what you're doing, you've got a lot of, you know, good people, and Moee, like I said.
We couldn't do it without this guy.
Been around, you know, spiraling in, continuing to do it, so, again, to me, that's a, you know, a better accomplishment.
Yeah, great.
So I move to put the Neck of the Woods Education Center funding request on the ballot that makes sense, either here in November or on town meeting for the $25,000 allocation.
Second.
Thank you, John, and further discussion and questions on the board. Here to none, all in favor, everyone, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right.
We really appreciate your time and your enthusiasm, that's great.
All right, so I think, John, we have probably you and Chris discussing the town, what I mean, I was thinking town forest management plan, and, no, so let me back that up, I misspoke, discussion on the town hall, I mean, Don, Depp.
Corey.
Corey. Apparently, pardon me.
Two, or?
Yeah, I want to see everyone just pull up around the table there. What's up, is that Chris?
I'm on the other side.
All right, so I think we, John, have written off this here that you sent us?
Yes, let me, yeah, this is it.
All right, go ahead and take the floor. Whoever would like to.
Okay, I'm happy to start. So I was like, I asked us to take a look at the town hall use policy and rental agreement, so we did do that, and this is the draft that we came up with, but we also worked, showed the draft to the library trustees, which is why Depp is here, and then we also, a couple of us also met with Cheryl Lynn and Sasha to get their input as well, so it has, you know, maybe the rounds. So when we looked at the policy, it just, this is really an excellent document, I mean, it just, it's so clear, it's very well-written, so there really weren't a lot of changes that we made, the changes that we did make were ones that reflect the current status of the building and its use. And so I know that you have had an opportunity, hopefully, to look at this, and anything that is in blue is either a change in the language, or it's actually new language, and you can flag in red just as we have to still clarify that a little bit. And then everything that's in black type, with one tiny little exception, which I'll get to, this is just current language, so you can convince and flag has not changed at all. So we're just hoping to, obviously, you know, that, hopefully, that would make it easier to go through and note changes. So I wasn't sure if you wanted to just go through it in a linear fashion, or if you wanted to just start with questions that you have, it's really up to you how you, how you want to proceed.
We might as well just go right through it in a linear fashion, and start at number, looks like there's nothing with number one.
No.
Number two, priority of use, and so you're adding language, go ahead, Carla.
Right, well, again, the first part, the first part of that paragraph is, comes from, you know, the prior agreement. The only thing is, on the third line where it says utilized by town staff, boards, commissions, and committees, before, it also said, and town-sponsored events, and so we just changed that to say for community programming and events, because we felt that more reflected, you know, what is happening now. So, so that was, that was the change there, and also, obviously, not during regular library hours. And, and then again, the sentence, accommodations can be made for immediate needs, you know, for example, a memorial service or boost during an emergency, we didn't mean that those are the only two, that we were just, you know, mentioning a couple of examples that might then take precedent over any other commitment or schedule.
So on a, Saturday, we couldn't do anything, it says between 3:00 PM and 12:00 AM, I think that's the correct, those.
No, you could.
You can, you can.
Hours. That would be a little bit party.
So I, it seems like Saturdays, there's a possibility that people would want it early at 3 o'clock if they had a wedding reception, or, or some other function like that, is it possible that you could word that, that Saturday, there may be more time available on Saturday, if, if they do approve of the event or something like that?
What has been the conflict now? I mean, as far as, because once in a while I see libraries closed for a private event, how many, how often does that happen, Corey?
Well, the pandemic sort of skews everything, right? So I would say, starting with the Nutcracker event, it's probably been, what would you say, four or five times? And I think just, it's, it's a balance, right? Because if the library becomes unreliable, people won't, they'll never know whether it's open or not, and, you know, someone used the example of, what if they send their kid there after school on a Tuesday, not knowing that we have to be closed for a different event? So it's that tension, and I will say, I think Saturdays, I think a weekend day is important to preserve for the people that work Monday through Friday jobs, and we're only open till 6:00 during the week. So that's something where, you know, maybe we shift our hours around a little bit, if it feels like there's a real need for Saturdays, I wouldn't say that's been the only day that we've been asked to be closed by any means.
No, I certainly understand that, not going into it, we knew there was going to be those days that needed to be closed, because of the other uses of, of the town hall.
I think what happens is that, and like Corey said, it's not like the old days when a lot of people were renting the town hall, after all, it does have some, a few, the basement is kind of not really habitable at the moment, you know? And the insurance certainly is an issue as well, so, but I think that sometimes maybe just the coordination of the rental as we move forward, and I think this is what we're trying to also address in here, is, you know, how we go forward coordinating rentals, so when there is a case of, you know, you're celebrating an anniversary and you want to start partying at two, but you reached out in advance, you know, far enough in advance, then accommodations can be made, you know, stuff like that. And as we go further through the document, you can see it's kind of addressed that way to try and how to get to that, that spot where things like that can take place, but the management of it is, you know, is coordinated with all the parties.
And I think to have like a really clear document that we all follow, it might be good to even come up with, like, how many times a year would the library close on a Saturday for an alternate event? So that it can be something that everyone just follows without having to be subjective about it.
I think as a library trustee, that's my concern, is that sometimes the communication isn't clear among all parties, and so the library is scrambling to get people to help break down, to get people to help set back up, because it's, seems like it's last minute, because the communication hasn't been that clear. And to Corey's point about Saturdays being such an important day, I think that the library does have hours, and go in and you see families in there, it's just a real opportunity for community to use that space and have it be countable. And I guess my thing, again, is just, how do we clear up communications so that, so that we're not scrambling to try to move things, but feel as if transition to a different event happens in an orderly fashion, where all parties feel respected, where we can inform the town, people of the town, hey, this Saturday or Tuesday or whatever, this is happening, with enough notice that it feels as if we recognize that, I guess, I'm a library trustee, that the library is what takes the most time there, and that we're open to other events around the library, for the most part, just to speak to your point though, right? There needs to be some flexibility in there, but maybe, as Corey says, we say seven times a year, or 12 times a year, once a month, we could, whatever, I'm just saying, so it's just very clear, people aren't blindsided, and all parties are operating on the same playbook, and you can go back and say, oh, but this was an understanding, or you can refer to it later. I think that will be helpful in clearing up communication.
I just worry with that, that people may not rent it, if you say we're only gonna allow you to do something once a month on Saturday, someone's trying to plan a funeral, then.
Oh, no. Clearly, it's clearly getting a funeral.
Accommodations can be made for immediate needs, I.
Like this past fall, we had a beloved community member pass away, and we cleared out, you know, within three or four days, if someone's planning a wedding for next June, you know, it would be nice to know that, and, and I would just point out, like, this year, we've had almost 1,000 visits in the space, we've had over 350 people participate on our ram, so like, it's not like that space is restricted and people can't use it, there are people using it daily when we are open.
I just want to clarify too, I didn't mean that it shouldn't be open on Saturdays, I just meant additional, like, right now, we're saying it's available from 3:00, right, to every, every Saturday, but maybe one Saturday a month, it could be from noon, that's.
Or accommodations can be made, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
But I think it's also, and maybe we should just keep going through this. Yeah.
Corey, we're working.
Well, I was just gonna say, keep in mind, the other piece of this later this evening is, you know, and part of the, I mean, part of this piece also coincides with the fact that, you know, we've sent out this RFP, and we're gonna start, gonna think about this, the next phase of, like, of upgrading and renovating the town hall, so this kind of goes hand in hand with that, because some of the accommodations that will be made, if we select them, when the architect shows us this couple of different, different designs that we've come up with, and it'll make even, there'll be more uses going on in the town hall, which will drive having someone, you know, having a management system in place in this document, you know, this is just the beginning, it's not necessarily we're gonna walk out of here tonight saying this is the gospel, you know, but, you know, again, as, as we fix the building up and more people use it, and there's the basement, it's a viable space, and, you know, the library is there, but then the shelves are gonna move so that the town hall meeting can be there, and, you know, I can have my 75th birthday party there, because that's about when the project will be done, but, but, you know.
Can't be that, all right.
Thanks, thanks.
That was nice, thank you.
The way that was turning across the wall.
Anyways, let's carry on, you know?
Go ahead, Carla, if you want to.
Yeah, okay, yeah, and again, this next page, there aren't a lot of changes, it wasn't, we actually did renumber it, just because we thought that we should put the kitchen and the parking, a way for, just to make it really clear what is available, what isn't, and the only change we made to the kitchen was the original one, said that, you know, basically, it was a full, you know, full functioning kitchen, and, you know, at this point, it's not, so we just, you know, wrote that it's, you know, it is somewhat limited, so, but otherwise, you know, you can see there's really, really no changes to the kitchen, the parking prohibitions, all of that, other than getting, we also thought for parking, we should try to let them know exactly like how many spots there really are there, and just how limited that is, just so that's kind of upfront, so.
Does anybody here know how many spots, like, go at the town hall?
Depends on how close you park.
Well, I don't, you know, that's still in this, in this design.
And also the time of year.
Yes, that's true.
And we're parking on the other side, at the grace of the song.
Yeah, right, which, I don't think we should really count it, so.
So we can, I can have Martin and maybe Ray, when you get a chance, once you go up and really measure out, what do we have?
Say no more than 10.
You think there's 10?
No, there's no.
I tell you, I said no more than.
Of course, that's an easy, I'm gonna say no more than five.
I was gonna say four. I had a new concrete piece in for the. Which has a new concrete piece in for the drainage system.
You have the handicap spot.
I mean, if it's not winter, we could have more against the.
Created.
Yeah.
We can number.
But does it leave you with information to provide a renter? Just so that you don't run into the issues of having them parked.
So I think it does talk about, um, not parking in the back.
Yes.
Because those are private, so maybe in whole spaces that could be highlighted. You have, to remind you, you have four spaces plus the parking lot up here to use. So that they do know that there is.
Well, actually, but parking right behind the town hall by the gas tank is the town, who's thought of the town halls again.
That is true.
Right, so that.
I mean, I have seen 10 cars parked there before.
On both sides though.
On both.
Yes.
Right, but not to town. You know, he might have shoes out that day or something.
Well, anyways, we were trying.
No, no, both sides of the town hall, I mean, up against the town hall.
Yes.
There, and behind a little bit.
I'm not trying to park your cars there, but your news, SUV, you would book 10 of those.
By one, I would prefer to see the municipal lot use more. And Don and I have been working on a crosswalk.
Yep.
So, and that would be, that would be really ideal.
All right, so we have at least one thing to come back to revisit, number of parking spaces. All right, Carolyn, go ahead.
On the next page, the cleanup, the one issue that we came up with, we started talking about the fact that now we need to, to separate food scraps. And so we started thinking about, okay, if you have a renter and they have food scraps and trash, they have recycling, you know, and how difficult is that for the town hall custodian? And, you know, and how do we set that up? And so actually, when, um, a couple of us met with Cheryl and Sasha, they actually thought that was just really kind of undoable. And like really that maybe what we should say is that it just is not trash removal services provided. And then if you have the town hall, is that kind of packing and packing up? And you just need to take care of your own trash because, you know, again, if somebody does it incorrectly, then, you know, what does the town hall custodian do if there's food scraps in the, you know, in the trasher? So that was, that was their suggestion, that it's, it's just not an option.
All right, I think if it's clear and spelled out and the reasons behind it, it would make sense to someone. We need to make sure that is.
And then, um, in, on nine, I mean, this, um, I think this is where we tried to separate out the responsibilities of, um, the, a town hall manager, the, the town clerk, and the town hall custodian. So, um, in the first paragraph, um, that we used to say, um, that the scheduling of events would be done through the town, um, town clerk. And we have talked a lot about the position of a town hall manager, um, being a central person, um, who would coordinate all the scheduling events. And, um, and so actually in the second line there too, actually, it should, where it said, um, if there are any questions about space, facility, or equipment available, that phrase actually should also be in blue because that, that is new. And so that was one of the reasons we talked about having a town hall manager, um, be someone, um, probably, um, as a library staff person or something, that only because of scheduling events and the number of events that happen through there. But even if there are questions maybe about space, about the facility, about what's available in terms of equipment and all those kinds of questions.
What type of did you get?
Could be answered through a town hall manager. Um, and then the second paragraph, that does stay exactly the same where it talks about all insurance certificates, deposits, payments, all would still be mailed to the Moore Towne Town Office to be attention of the town clerk, uh, or dropped off during normal business hours. If there's any questions about payment, um, that would also be the town clerk. Um, so all of, all of the paperwork would still go to the town clerk and he processed the way it always has been. And then that last paragraph about the town hall custodian, uh, again, is, is, um, pretty much exactly what it had said before, although there was a question about that we need to add additional information about the, and just so that people were clear on how that works and what we have to do.
Do you have any questions, anybody?
Yeah, and then again, you can see there really aren't any, uh, questions for 10, um, 11. Um, I'm sorry, did you want to?
No.
Okay. Um, 11 is just, the only reason that 7 isn't read originally, we were kind of confused about if there was a 7 in one place at a 10, but again, I talked to Cheryl about that and she said, no, that's all fine. Um, we did add that, uh, we inserted this space without the sentence, proved that insurance is also required, should be right there, so it's just very kind of, um, really clear. And then again, in terms of all the, um, the rates, obviously the only thing we did was we took out the pre-arranged trash, trash removal because if not we provide that, that would be omitted.
I was also just curious in reading through this with the cleaning fee. It says if necessary. So I don't know how it works. Now, I know like during COVID, um, Megan was cleaning after groups were in there renting. But I don't know if that's still happening or if that's going to continue to happen or if it only happens. I don't know what if necessary means yet, as if just a question I have about what does that mean for you should just be in there and cover what Megan does to clean up after.
Personally, it should be because it should be cleaned regardless. So I think someone will do a good job, but we should have a consistent clean.
Yes.
And if you have, still being consistent, then I think that would certainly make sense rather than my cleaning, your cleaner probably different. Okay? Yours being cleaner than mine. All right, go ahead.
Okay, so, um, then, um, again, just the town hall manager, again, I just listed as a, again, library staff. Um, and then in terms of the town hall rental agreement, we really changed very, very, very little. Um, that we did, and obviously that, um, we thought it should be a checklist right on form, whether or not they need the kitchen, uh, whether or not they like the refrigerator. But again, just, again, just a quick thing. And then again, um, number five, um, insurance, we simply moved it from number eight to number five. Again, just to put it like right up, right up front.
All right, I think it's.
You know, right with the, um, rent and security deposit section. And, um, and then the other thing on the, um, number six obligations of the rent term, we just added the phrase, um, that it would be liable to, uh, for repairs to the facility or replacement of talent or library equipment and materials. And then I think that's it. I think that's exactly what it was in the previous policy.
So you, you talk about a town hall manager. Were there any other thoughts on how, how that would work as far as, um, you pay for? Is it a volunteer position? Is it a trustee? What's the thought behind that?
I don't think, I don't know that we spent a lot of time thinking about that. We spent a lot more time thinking about the responsibilities and the coordination and how that would work, um, in terms of, you know, the calendar of events and, um, I'm not sure.
I think at this point, we were just talking about it in, in this first phase, that it would be, you know, someone from the library staff, like, talking with Corey about it. And then I think, you know, thinking, you know, down the road, you know, the three or four years, five years from now, it's like, a lot of, a lot of things are going on and, and, you know, we have some fees for different events. There are people who are renting the town seats for different groups or meetings. And then, I won't go with all the possible uses, but that maybe it'll be able to, at that point, someone would actually become, you know, you would really need to move it to the next level of a, not a library staff person, an actual town hall manager, you know? At some point, five years down the road, years down the road, you know, who knows? Depending on what kind of stuff we have to go on, but at this point, just coordinating all the programs that the library is doing, not just lack, you know, community programs that they're doing. And the rentals, I think would be easier to coordinate those, all those functions, you know? Now, that was the suggestion at this point.
So are you thinking that, is there something that Corey would pick up? Is that what you're?
I think so, or potentially Nicole, and now I can get. The level of renting right now, you know, would fit within the hours that I currently have as a town employee. And overall, it would allow for a lot of, like, more communication. So the Sipman Shop Group, you know, rented it out a few months ago. And I was not aware that that was the group renting it out. And if I'd been aware, I could have like helped them promote it. I could have put it on the sandwich board sign, you know? It could have helped really make it a, a great community event. I think it was successful anyway, but, you know, unfortunately I didn't know that. And so I posted a front porch forum that it was closed due to a private event at the library. And so that, that's just the kind of like communication that I think would be fixed. Um, you know, if we were able to, to help schedule and rent it out. And, you know, having this document in front of us makes it really clear about who can rent it out when, sort of thing. So it's not that hard to, to follow this management.
So currently, your, your hours, Corey, um, if it's available on these days, you're, you have library hours, the other hours.
Correct.
Just.
We're open 20 hours a week. And then we do, I don't know how many hours of community programming, but it's not always at the town hall, like the summer, but mostly outside.
So Sasha, what, um, and I'm glad everyone had some input. Um, but as far as you folks or Cheryl Lynn, um, does that work for you guys as far as not having to, to do the bookings? I, I think originally more was a money tracking issue. Obviously seems like that's addressed here.
Go through Cheryl and the treasurer, so that part, no barrier, but yeah. It might take a little bit of pressure off some of the things.
So Cheryl would still handle the money.
Yeah, she would need to handle it.
Yeah.
But it makes sense that somebody who's there at the library half time at least.
Cause I didn't know about that.
Yeah, exactly.
Probably something, yeah.
That's a good example.
Yeah.
But, uh, we've been very helpful.
Should we think about though, the, um, I think the Saturday hours and rate? You originally brought it up. Is it possible, what, how, do you go until 3 o'clock?
10 to 2:00. And it takes about four of us half an hour to pack up. But I think that's the other thing, if, if someone's having a birthday party and they don't mind having it in the library and they don't need everything put away, so therefore, you know, we could be ready a lot sooner. And that's where those kind of conversations can happen, when someone reaches out to rent the space. Or maybe the library needs its hours to Sunday. I mean, one thing is this can always be changed. So if we try this for four to six months and we're getting a lot of community members that are feeling like they want to rent it on Saturday, you know, we can, we can shift our hours again. I think it's important to have some weekend hours.
I agree with you certainly.
But it doesn't really matter when they are, as long as they're consistent.
Well, I think when someone reaches out to, you know, the, the man, Corey, and they say, oh, I'm looking to rent it, uh, October's, some Saturday in October, but, you know, I really need to get in there, or some of my team for the party need to get in there, you know, early or something, you know? Well, certainly Corey will be able to go, oh, yeah, we can do this and we can accommodate that. I mean, there'll be some working together, you know? And go, okay, with this amount of notice, we can close the, uh, the library now early or something like that. So I think having her have the ability to, to coordinate with the renters, you know?
Sure.
And the program, someone will go, well, how about the setting? Corey can go, well, you know, we're having a, you know, a studying the bees that day, you know? And would you consider the, you know, the Saturday before or something?
Right. Yeah, it's, I think it's, and I'm, I'm sure you're willing to work with people. I just, because you always hear rumors, right, in town, people say, oh, I went to the library, they said I can't.
That's, I'm just gonna say it out loud, none of us ever said that to anyone. So I don't know how that rumor got started, but I want that on the record. I have never told anyone they can't rent the town hall, and neither has Nicole.
Right, so that, and that's, again, that's rumor, that's why I'm writing up this.
But I want to make it clear here on the record, that's what all it is.
We've all been there helping to break it down and break it, kind of, and set it back up, you know?
And if someone, you know, next October, they want a wedding on a Saturday, probably something we can accommodate.
Yes.
At six months a year in advance to close the library if you need to.
Mm-hmm.
Over there.
Yes. I mean, I do think to just be like 100% transparent, it'd be good to have it on paper of like, what are the circumstances, you know? Is it six weddings a year? Is it once a month? I personally think once a month is a little frequent for people to count on the library being open, but, um.
Yeah, see, I don't think you need, I mean, I don't want it too loosey-goosey, but, yeah, I think, you know, saying that we're gonna close it once a month is, is probably not a great thing to do.
No, no, I don't, I agree.
But.
But someone wants to have a wedding at uphill at 1:00 or 2:00.
And I don't think that it should, that we should be at the mercy of, like you said, someone in three weeks wants to have their wedding anniversary or whatever it happens to be. Some of us are late planners, but, you know, those type of things, we can look them in the eye and say, look, that's not, you know, we're out.
Or they could start at 3:00.
Right.
Yeah.
Or they can come in and operate the town.
Right.
Especially low, you know?
Well, I think the whole point is to use that, to maximize use with an inclusive field to everyone. So I think, you know, I'm, I'm certainly willing to give, you know, a go through and see how it works for the next six months or whatever, and.
Till town meeting.
Till town meeting, yeah, so whatever, you know? All of a sudden, then we're here, then, then we can, you know, we're all flexible here. I think that's, you know, you need to be in these times, you need to, uh, be flexible and, you know, everything's a moving point or piece here. Um, but if we all have the right philosophy that we're really trying to serve and do best, and you're willing to work, get your staff, I think that's good enough for me. Um, and if we have to, it comes a, a point where, you know, in the six months, say, all right, let's, let's put a number on how many times we can change this around. Let's, you know, consciously look at the next six months and see what, what it is. Cause I don't think you're gonna need to, I, I don't think we're gonna have that many requests, to be honest with you. And, you know, the funerals, I mean, we can't, those are the type of things that you can pit in if you do want to die.
Yes. Or God forbid, another flood of Florida or something like that.
Well, we'll have these booked too, so we'll be up high enough, but, um, and, you know, as long as it's not, obviously, tipping our, too much more in your time. And again, the, the communication back between you and the staff here so that everyone knows, uh, we're on the right, we're on the same page, so there's, um, you know, not checks missing or, or people not getting their deposits back and things like that.
Should we, we incorporate some of these changes just for the regular?
Oh, why don't we, now that we have this, we've talked about it, I think we've got some of the rooming here around the table. Why don't, between now and then, our next meeting, just go through and really see, I think we can make all these changes, but just give us a little checkpoint here. And we may, if we want to tweak here and there, but I see fundamentally, I think it works doable to many people.
Yeah, certainly, Carolyn. I have one thing I wanted to address now, on page two, number six. Says slogan is prohibited at the facility. And on page six. at the facility, and on page six, number eight, prohibited in the facility. So, bottom line is, somebody who's allergic to cigarette smoke is nothing more obnoxious to have to walk by somebody at the front door smoking. So, I mean, pretty much, if anybody needs to smoke, they can smoke in that corner.
Just there on the premises, there's that one, like, set in the building.
So non-smoking, um, you know, maybe like most restaurants, it's not really that supposed to be... All right, so, um, Karl, is it, yes, you go? Deborah?
Yep.
Cory?
Yep.
Great.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice afternoon.
Thank you very much, always, for the work on, much appreciate it.
Yeah.
Very much.
You still there?
One.
Watch your step.
Do you want to go right as well around the town hall, just kind of, go quickly into just talking when we are with the RFP and stuff that we talked about in the last meeting? Do you want to weigh the whole business and stuff?
Uh...
It's fine, it's, you know, I can bring it up under my old...
Yeah, why don't you do that, um?
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm paying attention. Um, all right, so reports and communications, thank you, ladies. Chris?
Thank you.
Sasha?
I don't have anything, I just have, um, just a thing that's open for you to share contract.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. A couple of overnights.
All right.
Cheryl Lynn, I think we're...
All right, so we'll address those all on old business. Ray, do you have any reports, communications announcements?
A couple, couple of things. Most everything is up there, old business, the recovery, meeting, and Gallaudet, but I did want to bring up, and that's probably why Mike is probably on board tonight, um, so there was, Mike has started his work on Cobb Hill. There was a few issues between, I think, communication issues between Mike, um, and Martin, myself, and Denise, but I have spoken to Mike directly, and I think everything is resolved. I haven't heard anything from Denise in a week, so I assume that, having her, her and Mike work things out as far as, there was a delay with a lot of the project, and, yeah, they were supposed to notify us on starting work two days before, and apparently Mike and Martin had met up, and I didn't know that, but Denise apparently was part of that conversation, so I, I think things are going okay, and I don't know if Mike wants to say anything about it or not, but I see he's online still, but, uh, I'm satisfied.
Yeah, no, things, things are going good. I just wanted to address anything, if there was any comment on it. Um, I, uh, yeah, you know, we apologize, obviously, for the inconvenience, we talked to you guys, you know, we're just trying to do right, uh, and ensure that we're making no inconveniences for anybody around, um, but I think we, we should be in good shape moving forward, hopefully.
Yeah, good, that sounds good, Mike, I appreciate it, um, so, and I haven't heard anything, so that's always good, so, uh, keep up, communication, we appreciate, uh, all you guys working together.
Thank you, Cory.
Yep. Ray, anything else?
Another presentation.
Kelly?
Um, I just had a conversation with a, I guess, camp owner on Lynch Hill, um, there were some, I wouldn't even call them barbers, they're like trenches with a shovel put in, like, every ten feet up the hill. I don't know when he figured it out, it was a conversation, so I guess Martin knew it was coming in, so that was fine, but one of the camp owners had complained about it coming up the hill, because it's a sharp edges, so we just went through and kind of cut the edges off, but there was also some complaints about the same person that put them in speeding down the hill, and speeding up the hill, and he has a young child who's out, his camp is twenty feet from the road, and then speeding by at twenty, twenty-five.
So, did you, um, tell him to call the state police?
He is gonna, he was gonna talk to Riley, he was just kind of...
Letting him know what was going on, all right.
Yep. And then there has been some four-wheelers coming up the road in the middle of the road, like, I almost hit one of them down the corner on the Berlin section, two four-wheelers flying up the road. There was a Toyota pickup, that the five had been farther down the road, he came on the corner from through Malbridge onto Jones Brook Road and went that way, so if I see them again, I will be calling the state police, because I know, I know who they are.
Yeah, those, you need to report them, because if you don't do it, you know who they are, someone that doesn't know who they may hit, so we gotta, I know it's a pain in the heart, reach out to them and say, "Look, it, you know, respect our town, respect our roads," and...
And, I mean, there are points where we won't go around the week, because they're up there and they're racing and tearing around and...
Well, never mind that, just continue, call the state police, I mean, just, you've had enough of it, and it shouldn't endanger other people.
So when I see them again, because I didn't get enough look at them this time, but when I see them again, I will.
Yeah, I think that's the only thing we can do, based on our conversation there.
Would this be something, if we enter into, uh, that hourly rate thing with the sheriffs, the, the proposal we got from, would that be something that we could call the sheriffs for?
No.
I mean, with only one, not, not just one person, you know, whoever that...
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 so that's...
It's not the same.
That's not...
Yeah, okay.
But that's where we may, if we went to the sheriff and said, "Look, we have constant speeding on Saturday afternoon on Lynch Hill," we could say, give him that type of information, and that's what he said, or he would park over there.
Right.
But he's not going to, you know, it's, it's not like the state police are supposed to, you know, we give them a call, they're supposed to show up, which we know that is, you know, hard for them based on their limited availability, but if we have a constant, you know, that's happening Saturday afternoons, Sunday afternoons, whenever, you know, we need to communicate that, um, if we decide to go forward with the contract. So if you add on that, it would fit in in a certain way, but not as hard as writing, yeah.
No, that's not what they describe, that's not what they're, that's not their thing.
Yeah. Anything else, Kelly?
No.
Done.
Um, the communications, no.
No, I don't have the announcements, no, John?
That was just, thinking, getting back to Lynch Hill, uh, the speed limit right now, theoretically, is thirty-five.
Mm-hmm.
But with the new regs, we can lower it.
Right, so that's something we need...
So, I would say that would be a first step, because I don't think, with the speed limit at thirty-five, you call the state police or anything, and the person says, "Well, I don't know, twenty-five." So...
Because that's not marked at all, that word is not marked at all, on either side.
So that's, and, you know, if we've read the, if you've read the, the contract, actually, for the sheriff's department, it's one of the things they address in there, uh, you row, you know, we couldn't call them for that particular reason, because, uh, if it's not identified and doesn't have the proper signage, then they won't pursue something there. So that's...
So now, we, we can do that now?
Right, exactly, now, now, now with that, so now, I think, Kelly, maybe that's something you want to work, um, maybe that project here for the board is, is, all right, identify a few of these town roads that are in need of, um, probably all are, but, all right, this section between here and here needs to be lowered to twenty-five, and these are the signs that we need. Maybe do that in your area for Lynch Hill, if you don't mind, is that, can you do that for us?
Yes, because that hill is definitely not...
All right, so, so if we can bring that up to...
And we can bring it up on our little transportation...
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Do that, and so then we, maybe there's some funding there to target, or, or, or the ones that are up there.
Uh, next to the...
Very good. Uh, so John, you didn't have anything else?
No.
Uh, I guess no other communications announcements? Oh, I just saw communication, the Red Sox announced they just traded Christian Vescas to the Houston Astros.
Oh, geez, that was rumor.
Yeah, so hard to see him go, they're playing him tonight, too, so that'll be interesting to see whether he plays against us. Um, anyways, so let's go ahead, uh, we have select board minutes for July eighteenth into twenty-fifth to go ahead and approve.
I make motion to approve the minutes of July eighteenth and twenty-fifth.
Second.
Any further discussion on those minutes? Nothing? Nothing here? Uh, we'll go ahead and approve those, all in favor of I?
I, I...
All right, um, so I'm going to, before we go into, uh, new business, I see Karen, uh, our zoning administrator is online. Karen, you have something for us tonight, or you're just checking in to listen?
You know, I don't have anything, um, to add to the conversation, I kind of just wanted to attend, just to get a feel for what is going on in the town, um, so thank you for giving me a moment to say something if I needed to, but, um, I, I don't have any comments to add, thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Wait, I'm sorry, I do want to...
Oh, no, you have a chance.
No, it's a good thing, I just wanted to, um, say a word of appreciation for, uh, getting me the remote computer, um, I think that's gonna help with my efficiency and also just being able to address things at times when I'm not necessarily in the office on Mondays and Tuesdays, so, um, I know it's kind of a big purchase, so I, I really appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks, well, it's just important to you to be able to get back to people on a daily basis, or at least their emails, if they come in on Wednesday, they don't have to wait a week to hear back that you've received their email, so that's, um, money well spent, I think. All right, so, um, is there any new business tonight?
Uh, I just have, is Stefan online?
Stefan is online, he's beautiful.
Stefan, can you hear me?
Yes, I'm here.
Uh, I just had a question, Stefan, and, uh, I know Martin, I think was on vacation, but what, what is, what is the town highway department, the guy seeding their ditches that they dig?
Uh, so we are seeding usually every couple days, what we, what we get down, um, we're just using a, a conservation mix.
Okay.
I'm not sure what you're, what you're...
Well, I, uh, I know you did some ditching up around, more down Cobham, and, uh, I did have a, a call about, uh, it not being seeded for well over a week, and, and I know sometimes weather is a factor, uh, I gave it a chance to drive up there and look at it myself, but I think it, it's pretty important that, uh, when a ditch is dug, it should be seeded within, within forty-eight hours. You gotta get girls going in these seed, in these ditches or else, uh, things start rolling pretty quickly, and, and I hope that's what we're doing.
Yeah, it is, uh, you know, there's some times where it gets missed, a little section like between where we start and where we finish kind of thing will get missed, but usually not, not for more than a week, I would say, you know, that would probably be the, the max that we generally let it get.
Okay. That was my one question, Stefan.
Stefan, and this may be a question, Martin, have we, and I, we may have, but, uh, hydro seeder, have we ever thought about that?
We tried to get one, but it was too expensive.
Are there any other towns that have one, do you know?
Uh, Fasden has one, and I think Duxbury might, I don't remember if they had one or if they were demoing one, I think they were just demoing one, the more I think about it.
You know, check with your, your mother on that, and see what, you know, whether they, something that they, even though, I don't know if that's something that we was, you know, as a town, there's a limit on someone, you know?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's a, it's an expensive unit for a town, but I, I could see if we could split it with another town, maybe having it be economical, it's one of those things, like the repair costs would be split and, you know, all that.
Yeah, if you, you know, next time you chat with her, she's on the select board over there, so just see what their, their thought was, is, you know, did they decide not to buy one, did they buy one, and, uh, either way, what, why, or why not, if you don't mind?
Yep.
All right, thank you, Stefan. Anything else for us tonight, Stefan?
Um, I've been working on, um, some fire truck stuff to try to get that together, I'll plan on coming to the next, uh, the next meeting to have some time allotted to discuss that further.
Yep, I've already asked Sasha to put you some time in, so that was, that's done.
Perfect, and other than that, things are, uh, things are going good. I did, on the, on the town hall thing with you guys discussing parking spots, one thing that I thought of is, uh, that's a class three road that runs down the middle of that, so we'll have to figure out the, I don't know if there's actually technically enough room to have any parking spots by the time you get out of the, the class three road numbers.
That's a good point, Stefan. I guess we, we, yeah, we didn't think of that.
All right, well, thank you for throwing some water on our parade, Stefan, we thought we had...
Yeah, not a problem, anytime.
All right, get out of here.
Oh, and, while I'm on that also, uh, is there anything in there about, uh, snow removal as far as the sidewalks and stairs go at the town hall with the library being in there more? Is it something that, because it's been kind of a split thing, the library has been doing it, but sometimes they don't, so I end up doing it, so it's, we weren't sure if there was gonna be anything, you know, in there, and...
Well, that's something that we can look into.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, uh, address that. Thank you, Stefan.
We'll have to make another hat for you, Stefan.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Can you just stitch a piece of every hat together? I'll just wear one big one.
All right, all right, Stefan, thanks, if there's nothing else, we're gonna move ahead, so we can go home and do what we do. Um, so we'll, we'll go ahead and, uh, we do have some, um, old business stuff to address, and I will start with it, with the, uh, the sheriff's office. Did anyone get an opportunity to look at the contract that was sent, uh, around?
Yes, I'm pretty familiar with them anyway, so...
With the sheriff, Ray? You have a lot of problems with them, don't you?
They come and take you and work.
Well, when, uh, when, we used to hire, put contracts, and we would...
So all look pretty, pretty good for you, then?
Yeah.
Um, so what do we all think?
Go for it.
So we have that, we also have a quote...
For the radar.
For the radar, um, as well. So, and that's gonna be your...
And then we have this radar, too.
Right.
Which will do that much, but for the radar, anyways.
Right, so, um, the, the movable radar system is roughly eleven thousand dollars.
You know, is that the same system as, um, we got from, um, what's the name of the company?
Worksafe.
Worksafe, yeah.
This is the one that the sheriff's department recommended.
Right, okay.
So I think it's a different type of it, but along the same lines.
Okay, okay.
So what, and, and that was roughly the same...
It was roughly the same.
It was supposed in price, yeah. I don't know if this one has, I haven't done apples or oranges, I think.
Right, so that's, I, I guess we, we don't need to decide exactly that tonight, but, um, between ten and eleven thousand, we can count on for one of those, um, machines. We have twenty thousand dollars in that budget, um, so what do we say, a hundred, two hundred dollars a week is what this was coming out to?
Yeah.
Or one, is that, is that right?
Yes.
So, how many weeks, um, twenty-four weeks, it's not even that at this point, I'm two hundred, so that's, how much is that?
Five thousand.
Five thousand. So, we should have...
To January first, or to, to, to the next town?
That's to the end of the year.
To the end of the year.
Yeah, that's what I thought, so...
So we should have enough...
We should have enough money to do it, sign this, see what that looks like, and then, um, we have the remainder to spend on our other speed sources, which I think we can cover that, and one of these.
Yeah, there's, there's no cost to the state on this.
Yeah, just, I mean, the...
Bracket, and the...
Yeah, the rest of the couple hundred bucks, I think it would do that, including the guy's time.
Yeah.
Um, and I do think, I mean, I think these machines are, are very effective, just based on... Just based on my personal driving habits and I see them like you slow down, it's really a recognition thing. So-
I didn't pick up on the quote though. Is that the one that the sheriff was talking about that am I missing that it also records it? This model?
I talked to a lady in Texas, they, that's where it comes from, they recommended, and she said she was gonna put all the bells and whistles on the quote. You can build it to something that you want.
Yeah.
But it should have that.
Oh, so we'd have to sort of figure that out.
Yeah, I mean, there's several different things, but I would say that the traffic analysis app with the thumb drive and the manual, I would say that's exactly what we're, what we're talking about.
Oh, is that what it is?
The solar trailer is eight hundred. You know, and then it, there's all sorts of app odds that it-
But I think the total is with everything.
Yeah, the total is everything, but it's split out so that you can pull it out. But yes, so what I think, and I'll work with Sasha, why don't we go over the quotes for the two that we have and see what would make sense? And then come back here with a recommendation, but I would like to get this signed with the Sheriff's Department, get this out so we can get them patrolling as soon as possible.
Where would we, it would be, when it's not in use, would we store it like in the town garage?
In the town, yeah.
I think it should be in use.
Well, I mean, no, I agree. We could certainly be bringing it all around town, you know, in the winter or something.
Right, we don't wanna get it exposed to salt and things like that, so we'll be careful about it.
Or a storm or something.
But pretty much, you know, summer, the-
Yeah, a little over, you know?
April for November anyways.
Yeah. Let's see how it goes. I mean, it can't, certainly can't hurt. And it's funny, I also noticed that John Lynch did by himself a used police-
Oh, he did?
Yeah, it was-
Police car?
Oh, and that's where he's parked up there?
Well, down, I just, I guess I went through, it was parked at these flowers. It was a new plate that they just purchased, a temporary plate, and it was, you know, you look at it, it looks like a detective car, it was definitely that, so.
But on the feedback though, the feedback only really, we share with the sheriffs, that they look at the feedback. It's not like we're gonna be looking at the feedback and seeing oh, looking long when speeding by.
Right, 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 right. No, I don't think it, it's not, it's not taking licensed plates either.
It's like, this time of day, this day of the week, that way they could-
That way we can tell them.
It doesn't, they're gonna like it. Car, vehicle.
Right. And-
Oh, I see.
But nobody needs to know that.
So who, as far as having, we need to have that one touch point person with, with them over there. Where, where do we wanna go with that?
Who's gonna be the person that makes the call?
Right.
Because they said they only want one person.
Which makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I agree.
Sasha.
Yeah, I think it works well that way. You're here, you know, you know, prior, you know, just, I think check with one of us. You know, you and I talk daily anyways, once or twice, just, you know, type of things that are going on there, just so we are well aware, but if you wanna be that, that person, I think that would work well.
But is it the kind of thing that like anybody in town could call, or they would bring it to the select board and say, oh, on such and such a road, this person, you know, every day is just zooming by?
Yeah, I know, and hear from us and then we-
Then it's not like Joe Smith can call Sasha and say, yeah.
No, we're not looking for that.
No, no, I understand, no.
Oh, that happens. I mean, I think it's just the normal course of the way it works now. People call every once in a while and they'll get, because they usually have those people call me or John afterwards. And so we'll still take those calls, but we'll have Sasha coordinate, alright, you know, for this week, depending on what it is, you know, and so you're not calling five times a week, or, you know, you may not call them, you know, in a few weeks, but you kinda, alright, Thursday afternoon, let me reach out to Lieutenant, or whatever it is. You know, we can talk about that, so we can go ahead and-
So that'll start as soon as they get it signed?
Yeah, we'll sign this tonight, have Sasha send it off. And so I would, you know, it's not gonna happen probably this week, but within the next couple of weeks, I think it'll hopefully, and that's you know, somewhere. Maybe I will reach out to them initially, just to say, alright, we'll sign the contract. What's the expectation of when you're starting? And Sasha's gonna be our point person, and so if you need anything, email to her, let her be that person, and then if there's something that the board needs to talk or be aware of, then she will flag it and send it out to us.
So if there's a given week that we don't tell them of a zone that we're concerned with digits on it?
Right, and I think it would be-
If we can field, they'll do a couple of hours here or something.
Right, I think that will be more so what it is, and maybe when we start, you know, there may be some areas that we'll say, you know, Sasha, hey, why don't you make sure they're doing this, but well, you know, let's let them do their job first, and then if we start seeing where we want, or we feel there's a need, then we can reach out to them and ask them to address that. Alright, so we'll go ahead and do that. The other sign that we have is just a note for the SCUBA stuff. And that's an interest rate of, I think we learned a part with this, it's just-
I think that there might be something else she wanted there, that she didn't talk to about. The loan can only pay for twenty-two grand, because that's like the highest score.
Okay.
So the remainder of the fund, we need to figure out where that's coming from.
Alright, and how much was that, do you remember?
Difference of like three, three and change, three thousand maybe?
Okay. Well, maybe that's where, Stefan, this difference, is that something maybe with your windfall with the tips, is that something that maybe we could count on with that? I think it's around three thousand?
Yeah, that could be something with it. I sure, I had originally planned on just burying it in, in my budget, in like in maintenance for the trucks, but looking forward, I need to do some maintenance on the truck, so I don't know if I'll be able to bury it there, but yes, we can, we can certainly-
Yeah, if you did that, because originally you thought you would put five towards it, this would be a little less, and that way you'd have more to do with your other activities that you wanted to do.
Yeah, absolutely. No, that's that's a good number. If Sasha can just send me an email with the, with the exact amount, I can talk to the guys and, you know, make sure it's something that they're all okay with for certain, but I'm, I have no doubt that it'll, you know, it'll go through.
Right, and we'll take care of the other twenty-two.
Right.
Perfect. Alright, so pardon me. So now we have, let's go down the list here, ARPA funds, someone-
Yeah, great. Okay, so we had an ARPA committee meeting last Wednesday, and I had told them that the select board was really looking forward to some es- not estimates, but some indications or some direction, so if we wanted to put anything on the ballot on November first, we could. So we did come up with some rough estimates, we're pretty much in agreement with. We've already allocated the fifty thousand for the CD driver, so there won't be any discussion about that. They did agree to like a hundred thousand dollar, a hundred thou- a hundred thousand dollar select board discretion funding to, for us to use as we thought appropriate to, you know, to keep the taxes within reason. Little items like, we talked about the balance of the budget or whatever. So, the committee is pretty much in agreement of that, hundred thousand for select board discretion. The Town Hall architect, we agreed to like a thirty thousand dollar number. And we did agree to the village sewer feasibility study, which it looks like we don't need now, that was thirty thousand. So we're meeting again next Wednesday, but those, those of the items that we discussed, and, you know, I had to bring up the, the two items that came up tonight, the waterbury ambulants and the neck of the woods. I just, I didn't know, you know, if we wanted to get stuff on the ballot this year, but I think we could. Depending what Sherwin has to say, but I think we could, but
Yeah, I think the I mean, the waterbury ambulance is one of those, almost like in that discretionary that got about a hundred thousand. The neck of the woods, I agree, that should certainly be under. I'm glad that they've thought of that, but and they ask for November thirtieth, I don't know, certainly was thought, it's on that.
I would say we could put on the ballot for November.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I think it's, if it was ever gonna be defeated, it would be in November, but even then, I would doubt it.
I doubt it too.
So I think that would work.
So do we want to put the Town Hall architect work out for fold, or are we just gonna, just go forward with that?
Well, I was, I'm waiting, I I think we gotta, well, if, you want me to get into the fail of this now, or?
Yeah, that's fine.
Well, I didn't know if it was old or new for us. Okay, so in answer to your question, Ray, I think we hopefully could make the decision and as the select board and move forward based on the RFP and the scheduling to have the architect and the whole schematic design process with all of our participation as they develop, as there's key dates, as you know, as they go forward, showing, taking what we've all put together, what we've come up with, and then putting it together, so we decide. And then eventually, they're gonna, not eventually, the schedule would be that by into November, in December, we would have a construction cost estimate, so that we can then look at town meeting and what we would put up in the, you know, town meeting for people to vote on, and, you know, what we could get for grants and all that, so. My take on it would be not to wait till November first like, hey, can we do this? Because if we do, then we'll just, the firm can't stop unless we tell them to stop and then get the money in November, you know, which I don't know if we could do that.
Do we have, do you have a dollar amount?
Yeah, I do. So we did this whole vetting process, we ended up with two, two proposals. One from monitored gated architects and the other one from Gosson and Backman and Mark Piliar and the other folks that are in Middlebury. And we had four people, Clark, Corey, Coller, myself, and we did a everybody read it without looking at the proposals, and we did a scoring, a vetting system. And then we looked at the proposals, and as we did the vetting, we actually selected the firm that came in with the lower, you know, lower price, without knowing that at first. And so we got a price for twenty-two nine oh two, which includes eighty-five hundred dollars in allowances to, you know, do some of the mechanical and the site work and water mitigation studies and and also to, one of the fees in that allowance is to hire a construction estimator, so once we have the final design of what we've all picked, we can then have it estimated, so that we can see what the cost out before we put it out to bid or we can vote on it. So yeah, I would I would be great, you know, I spoke to the firm, the two firms, to let them know where we were at, and that we'd be discussing it tonight, and then DIA was the, the firm that we selected, but, you know, I still needed to bring them to the select board and get it approved and and told them that, you know, just to, that I'd get touch with them tomorrow, basically, because then they'll need to forward a contract and insurance certificates and such, so. I would, I think all of you have been sent the proposals, I mean, I can re- re- email it to you, but DIA is quite a, a great proposal, and they've worked in a number, a number of towns on town halls and community buildings, and I think it's gonna be a great fit. So yeah, if we could, if we're allowed, if we can do that and vote on it and get this thing going, I think we'd be doing a great, great thing for our communities. Because our Town Hall certainly needs some, some help.
I, I agree, Don. I think, I think we need to make this step, this we have to either go forward with the Town Hall or abandon it, one or the other. We need to have the information to do that. And I would support going forward with the architect that you selected.
No, I think that's gonna be, as I said, our last chat about this, we need to figure this one out, whether it's a big no at the end or halfway.
No, or if you still stabilize it.
So it just needs to be done, and we're fortunate that we have these funds that have been able to do it. I mean, we only have it, which is a lot of money, I'm not saying it's a half a million, you know, now the hands are coming out for it, because I think we've all, we've had legitimate requests for this stuff. And I think this one serves the town well, so I would certainly support this now.
Good.
Kelly, what's your thought? John here?
Stefan?
Alright, Don, why don't you go ahead and make a motion on that?
I'd like to make a motion that the Town of Moretown hires DIA to ask for the RFP to follow the schedule that we have and come up with the design and design costs, the design menu and costs for the Town Hall.
Second?
John, second. Is there any further discussion on it? Anybody? I'm seeing none. All in favor of I?
Aye, aye.
Aye, alright, so we got that. Okay, that was ARPA funds. Do we have any other discussion on the ARPA funds?
I think if we're looking at it, I think we should look at putting at least a hundred thousand aside for a fire truck to help with some of that cost, because I mean, you kind of kicked the cane down the road with this fire truck.
You're talking about the tenure.
Yeah, at least a year.
Yeah, so that's why I have-
Needs to be done.
He's, Stefan's gonna be here our next meeting, we've already got time on the
Yeah.
On the schedule for that, so why don't we on that one?
But I think for the committee meeting, they'll probably have to talk about it.
Yeah.
Should bring it up, because that's gonna be a big thing. Coming down, it needs to be done.
Yes. It's, you're down to, when you order, it's two years before you get it.
Today, we were, I was discussing with them, you know, rough prices are between four and four hundred and fifty thousand dollars or something like that. Doesn't fly either, so I don't know. But I think Ray will bring that up to your, I think Stefan's gonna be at that meeting as well. He, he missed the last one, he's gonna be there.
Yep.
So that was gonna be on his, his thoughts there. Any other ARPA fund stuff that we've moved out? Alright.
Actually, not on request.
Karen? Yeah? Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So it has come to my attention that there is no database to track zoning in Moretown, and we, Moretown is one of the last municipalities in Vermont to not have that, and it, tracking it in the way we do is pretty antiquated, I would say. And I noticed that in my, before my time, a lot of organization was lost, and I'm trying to put that back together, but and I know the last thing you wanna hear from your ZA, who's been there a month, is to spend more money on zoning. But I do think it would be a major upgrade, and ARPA funds are a good use to do that. That being said, I have not done the research myself at this point to throw out figures for that, but I would be willing to do that effort if that's something that the select board was interested in entertaining.
I think what I'd like to, maybe at our next meeting- I think what I'd like to, um, maybe at our next meeting, or it doesn't even have to be your next meeting, um, a little bit about what that is. Um, and then, we're going into our budget season anyways, and so whether it's ARPA funds next year we use for it, because that's appropriate for something, or, or there's just something, all right, we decide we need, we need to put in the budget. Um, so I guess the, that's the long answer to the short, and yes, go ahead and, and research it, find out what type of cost something like that is, and then the benefit for the town, so we know. Um, and it sounds like, yeah, I mean, you've said organization and things won't be lost and such. Um, so, you know, expand on that a little bit, and, you know, something we can certainly discuss and we'll work on.
Thank you.
All right, so, uh, we'll go ahead and move on to, is there anything in legal trails that we have? I think, is anything moving to address tonight? Condensation, blinking lights, we've got that.
Well, with condensation, I, there's a, you know, I'm waiting, I've got a contract, I've been looking at it, it's been there, it's, it's, it's working on it. I should, I was touched basically today, and he said he's, he's getting close, it's tough to, well, we all know what's going on out there, so.
And you've got the work for the blinking light, Don, right?
Yeah, I, I, I'm pretty all set, and I've talked to, you know, many emails with different people in the state, and I, I, you know, I've got the rough draft, so maybe I can bring it in and have it typed up by the team here, uh, but before I did that, I was waiting to just kind of go see Martin, and just show him what I, what we got, and go through it with him, and, and.
Good idea.
Make sure we're all good, and then, then you can send it into the state. He's on holiday, and last week, he was way too busy for me, you know?
All right, I appreciate that, and thank you for helping him in the.
That's gonna be good.
Um, so the stormwater project, we heard about that, we got that moving, the town hall management plan, we, uh, possibly our next meeting, we can make some decisions on that, take the document we got home, one of the things that came up, as Stefan mentioned, is snow removal, uh, think about that. Uh, collaboration, and we'll work with Sasha on that, but to get this planning commission and DRB together with us, discuss ongoing issues moving town. Gravel pits, Don, your anything?
No, that's a, um, another, uh, item I'm working on with Martin and the team there, where one of, someday, where they, not too crazy, I was gonna go over there having lunch, cause we have a rough drawing that they've had, and we've looked at that we, before we bring it to the board, we wanted to go, or, so. I'm hoping that one of these days I can just pop in, you know, at lunchtime or something.
Or bring him, bring coffee some morning.
Yeah, or coffee, or donuts or something.
Yeah, food usually will get people together.
Yeah, there we go, food.
Um, all right, and Sasha.
Yeah, okay, I know the ones, the, the big picture of those guys, man.
Get everything from my pool, please, then.
I had some of those yesterday, they were so good.
The big picture ones?
Big picture ones. Girls were home, and they're like, we gotta get those, and, um.
I haven't heard about them, I'll be running down the ground, get some if I do.
No, it's only on weekends, so you're afraid.
Only thing they did for two years during COVID, wasn't doing that.
So they've got that down, I tell you, they're, and look at me, I mean. Anyways, Sasha, what do we come up with the dash cams here?
In Mar-.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, Martin is supposed to be pursuing the, holding on that.
All right, so that one's, and you were gonna talk with Cheryl Lynn about the River Road paving project?
Yeah.
All right, and I also have police coverage down that road, general business, so. We've addressed that, what else do we have, folks, people would like to, uh, to go over tonight?
I just want to mention that, uh, I did like that gallery acres with Martin, who went on vacation.
You'd want, I'm sorry?
Not the gallery, the university.
Oh, yeah, you said, yeah, yeah.
You know, taking over that road. Still trying to figure out the whole process, so I don't have much to report, but I am pursuing that to figure out what needs to be done.
Perfect.
The biggest issue with me was, I don't know, you know, as far as a right of way, whether they have to provide a, a, a drawing, and with all of the easements from all of the, every problem owner for us to hit, hit the road, you know, which is gonna be pretty expensive for them, but, I don't know, uh, so I'm trying to figure that out, you know, the whole process, but, I don't think that part alone will be pretty expensive for them to try to get anything else from the owner.
Right, we don't have that works, it just sounds, it sounds easy.
Yeah.
It's not. Um, Sasha, so let's add that on the whole business, so we don't forget that, gallery acres, you know, thanks, Ray. Don, did you have any else?
No, just two other little quick things, who's Ray and I, we're looking at this, you know, we have, uh, some leaking at the elevator at the town hall. And, um, I think it's cause the door is kind of rusted, it's just coming right in the door, and I don't think there was ever a guy on that building.
Well, I see, I see a gutter, break, crack, you know, there.
But now we're gonna address that, but in the meantime, you know, cause now we're gonna get this thing going and see what we have to do, but, um, what I was thinking about, and I went over there and, and another time, which Cory is, for now, maybe if we just put the dehumidifier in that corner down there with this, you know, cause it's not a lot of moisture, it's just, you know, cause we don't get a lot of rain. And rather than dehumidifier, just have it that, um, Megan and, you know, or myself, or Cory, or whatever, we can, you know, just be on top of emptying it a little more. That would, I think, help while we get organized, so I was just gonna suggest, I don't know how, who can, how we can.
Why don't you talk to Sasha, we'll talk to Megan, and you guys figure that out, that's all.
Perfect, and one other little, this is a really good one, just, um, the, the mats, there's a mat on the porch, and then a mat when you walk in the door, and they're probably fifteen years old, they're really all torn and worn, they don't even do anything, you know, because if you walk it out.
Yeah.
So, do you think those can, how could we, could we purchase two new mats for the town hall? You think?
I think, why don't you get, uh, first of all, they're doing what they're not doing, that, you know, get rid of them, and.
Yeah, no.
Get the sizes that you need, and then.
And then I'll, we can check it out, okay.
And see what you, and make sure you, when you are looking at something, get something that is nice and durable, I mean, you know, you spent forty bucks and get something probably decent.
Yeah.
Yes. Everyone else, any other old business?
Is there any drain or anything at the, so no way to, not a drainage drain?
No. I don't think there's a drain down there. No.
There is not.
No.
Seems like we would have.
All right.
I need to make a second.
So we do have, um, a curb cut here over on, uh, south side of Moretown, near, on McGivens Road. And overweight permit for, uh, Duranlo. Another one for, uh, Duranlo. And baking. Just community notes. Signed three times. Please. Oops, I'm trying to move that feather, right? Sasha, here is this. And this contract for the sheriff.
John?
And Sasha, we'll have to look at that, what's the numbers that we.
No, it's a number for that.
Here's, um, payroll. So everyone, uh, thank you for everyone's participation in the talk tonight, and on that, I'd love to post the meeting. Thank you, Ray, all in favor of aye?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.